Okay, number nine, under old business, we continue to discuss laws and continue to do that till hopefully we can get it settled with the city at some later date. We, out of number 10, is the energy excise tax. We have a resolution here.
Yeah.
We need to go over that.
I think we already...
Well, yeah, we just had to sit for a day.
The city signed the energy exemption agreement, so the next thing will be that. I also want to inform the board that I've spoken with a gentleman at ACCG. They're supposed to be helping give us some forms together. Any of the energy vendors that are in our area that we use, I mean, you need to send them a letter letting them know that we have adopted this. So I'm working right now on the list of getting all of our vendors to be there.
Okay, so this is the resolution I'll pass down every last minute. All right, so we handle those two, that's all right, Adam, and then else, let's see. We need to find this under... Did we sign it?
Yes, sir.
Don't be greedy on something. Good, start. All right, how many minutes left? Everybody's signing all that, I guess that'll get us through the energy excise tax and number 11 is the library board again as we agreed on the plan. I don't know that I've seen by here to speak about the library board left. Okay, and number 12 would be the hospital contract. We just have to take a little bit till January. That brings us to citizens comments. Anybody got any comments? Got two. Ms. Lawless, you've already spoken. Why don't you go ahead and tell us what you left out.
Okay, good, because I need to leave by 11:15. I am speak, I won't play that long. I am speaking as a citizen, not as family connection coordinator. On the 25th of November, which was the Sunday after Thanksgiving, my husband and I went to eat at a Chinese restaurant after lunch. I mean, after church for lunch, and then I went into Harvey's for some groceries. And while I was in Harvey's, there was an altercation between two women in there that ended up going outside. Basically, what I just wanted to bring to y'all's attention was, it was a good 15 minutes after contacting 911 before anybody, police got there. It was a police, an unmarked police car that, that came. I think that my question and my husband's question, because there were lots of children out there, that were family members, I think, to the ones that were fighting. A lot of other people came up in the fight. I would say there were a good 20 to 25 people out there fighting. What is the protocol on if the city does not have enough staff, if the county, if the sheriff's backing them up? And then also, when my husband and I called 911 to ask to be able to speak to somebody who was in charge, because, well, honestly, if my children had been there, I'd have been a lot more upset than I was. We were told that it was Thanksgiving holidays, and it is hard to reach anybody. Which, as a citizen, for my safety and my protection, I know other people that have to work on Thanksgiving holidays, and I don't think Thanksgiving holidays is an excuse. Anyway, I'm not asking for you to give me an answer. I'm just, I'm just bringing it to your attention, because I just think as a citizen, y'all should know exactly how it happened, that it was dangerous. And I really, as a citizen, did not feel very well protected.
If you'll get with me later, I've got all the reports from that. Me and Ramona went over all the recordings. And from the time that the call came in and it was dispatched, the police officers said they were 23, which was on scene within two minutes. Now, I don't know where they were at. I mean, we can't tell you that, because, I mean, only thing we can do is take down what they've got.
I mean, he thinks I've been sitting in their car and not been there.
Well, and it also could have been the time that, when the call was trying to be made, the phone was taken out of the person's hand by one of the people that were in the argument. So it could have been that the call was made later, and I...
But if you'll get with me, Ramona got a copy of the call log, the times and everything. And we listened, and we never could find anything where they were talking about it was Thanksgiving. And we have had problems with calls here going to the Bering County 911. So I don't know, but she went through all the records and we listened to it and, and you mean, don't dial 911 and get to 911? Every once in a while, it'd, it'd kick it to Bering County.
And I think, I think that's actually what happened, because when we called the first time and asked why it took so long, they did tell us that the first call went to Bering County, which was, I thought they did branch to the Bering County, but that must have been what happened.
But I've got the papers and I can show it. Does that all do that because of the phone that's called to them or just that matter?
Oh, sometimes it eats itself.
So I used to work on 911 system in the Land County.
Yes.
All the 911 trouble that happens to be tied up at that time, they gonna be a long journey, how it takes. And it's gonna be to another P S A, which would be another. See what I'm saying? That could be what's happening with it.
I think that's where that came in about Thanksgiving, because we couldn't find anything, and they cannot erase those.
Right, right. Okay, all right, thank you for taking that.
They may be the backup P S A for, for Cry County, you know, you probably know, you can find that.
Thank you for taking that.
That makes sense.
But I checked on it the next day for you.
Harold, who's on 911 board in this county other than you?
Johnny and Alex.
And I guess that might be a good time to go ahead and advertise. We need to advertise without...
This, this, off this board.
We picked all this board, but it doesn't happen for you.
I don't know, I have to review the ballot of the month.
We have four from the last, from the last year. Are you seeing that board?
Okay.
You got it. Look good, you can make it. Yours for O C, to replace running.
Yeah.
That's your appointment by yourself, because you're, you're designated as O C, so you don't have to go before. Boy, that's really, I didn't have to.
Next one. You still there till January?
We still there till January.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to ask a question. On the sanitation department, you've been in focus for a few years in Leneer County and to Launce County, one of them. I have a question. How did the commission feel about it? You made it a money, or it was better when you made the change for the pickup? You understand what I'm saying?
You mean, where we don't handle the trash ourselves, do you?
Yes, you got one to boxes, so. Are you satisfied with the company that do this, to pick it up? Got problems or no problems since you've been in it a few years?
We haven't been, well, made aware of many prob, any problems, actually. We have the contract with sanitation folks over there at Biola, and we get reimbursed for the tons that we dump over there. I don't know, does anybody have a point?
Just a quick comment, a bunch of complaints that I've heard from some citizens about, if you try to pick up, because when we used to have the county pick it up, I was living in the county, and then I left. I came back, we had the curbside. Here's, here's the point. Couple individuals talked to me about the cost of Biola keep increasing, because they have like a gas tax thing, a couple other things. As you very well know, like cable TV and other things keep rising and rising. That's one of the complaints I had concerning the Biola contract. But for us, the services, I have not heard anything bad about the services. It's the cost that keeps increasing.
I can tell you this, because I just actually looked at the paper Saturday, no Friday. Clint's County is charging over $30 a month for trash pickup, so theirs is double what ours is. They're doing their own, so, I mean, it's, it's saving us money, actually.
Well, that, that's reading out the actual code. Tomorrow, the county's supposed to be looking at that and voting on it, so that's reading out. There's gonna be some, you know, some questions, but I just want to make sure that, you know, that the company, if you're, if Leneer County is satisfied with, you know, it may be, you know.
Eccles County does, Eccles County's got Bureau, I think, a moment, and I know Leneer does, and nobody complaining about the problem.
I may be the only one, but I got a letter saying that they were guilty for charges, and you could get a reimbursement for it if you had all your bills and stuff.
Fuel surcharges or whatever it may be. Also, too, Mr. I, I want to say this, too, and I heard this comment from some citizens, and from what I seen, I think it's a good thing that the county went to curbside pickup. I definitely support it, but however, some of the citizens will say, well, I gotta pay to have my trash pick up at my house on the county, and I pay property taxes, so you'll get into that a little bit.
Well, thanks for the information.
That contract, I wonder.
It's done, we, it's a five-year contract, we have representative on it.
Okay, Greg, you have something?
Yes, sir. I'm calling, we have Tim Brown, chief of Westside. Basically at night, we had three heart attack patients over in Westside within an hour. And during the three calls, we weren't able to make contact with 911 through our portable radials one time. Is there any way, Mr. North, and everybody else is having the same problem, they're saying that this repeater cannot be fixed, or we cannot get a repeater out there?
Now, I know.
Once we are out of our truck, we cannot make contact unless we dial 911 from our personal cell phone.
I have to split with Gary on that, and he, you know, we do only have one repeater in our county, and that's at our Lakeland based station. That, that's the only repeater we have. I know out in Stockton, if we have a call out there, it's the same thing, on our handheld, if we get out the truck, we have no communication unless we use cell phone. Then we wind up tying up 911's line if someone tried to get in with them, you know, we got them tied up trying to communicate with 911. You can't hear that it breaks up.
Check in, you know, wait a take to fix the problem.
Yeah, if we're out there assisting EMS, you know, because they're on another call to S V M C, and if I'm the only person there to help a patient that I have to do CPR, I can't be running back and forth to the truck to find out what's going on. I mean, we waited 15 minutes on one call for Bering to come out to assist.
Well, they couldn't get a hold of him. I, I, I remember that one that night, because I could hear faintly, it just statickyed, so he couldn't communicate. Then he finally said, you know, that he would place a call via landline, so I know he'd made a call on his phone to whoever it was that he could communicate with about that call. And there again, that goes back, you know, if we could get a second truck, all, you know, tech and ambulance in our county, we wouldn't have that problem either.
They did work in time, let me say this. They did work, if the weather's good and clear, they work fairly good, but if you got clouds about, you have, you can't work, you know, neither side, either that way or that way. You wouldn't, you just kind of dead at the door. But I think the repeater being in the center of the county the way it is is what the reason is kind, and that's about it, on the way you're gonna have one repeater. But if you had two repeaters, you'd have to move one a little further that way, and then put one this way a little bit, and it would cover the whole county.
I do think they raised the antenna one time, I believe, at the station, and it helped, just a little, it helped a little bit.
That's how the way you go with it.
Yeah, that's how if you go to air.
Even at times, the trucks have bad communications. It's real, real foggy, you can't, the truck don't want your communication to be...
What kind of question might be for Harold or you guys? And I just learned this last week. When there's an emergency in the county, and it's dispatch, whether it be on Westside or in Stockton, it goes to Leneer County Lakeland Fire Department first. Is that true?
Yeah.
Correct.
Is that proficient?
That's per, that is the standard SOP that was written by Chief Yelman's district chief.
And that has been discussed, but, I mean, he, he sent that in out there, and we had to follow it at the 911 center.
But then what that does, though, is it, it takes, it puts down the time for the Stockton to get paged, so, you know, it cuts down on us responding to those calls.
I agree.
Plus, we're double paying. Two fire departments go to a call that one can do.
I agree.
Well, I do know why Chief Yelman's pretty much put that in, in play, because we have one rescue truck in our county, in this station that, our Leneer County office, uh, Leneer County, I mean, our Lakeland station. On that rescue truck, we have Jaws of Life and such, okay? It takes near about as fast as you want to drive, 10 minutes or so, to get to Stockton. And you count in a person that's a volunteer, because we're not a paid station, so we have no one there. You take it into consideration, it takes someone five minutes mostly to get from their home to the station, get the, the station open, get a truck rolling, get through traffic, get out of town. You know, you've got to count for those minutes also, as well as the garage time to Stockton. We have someone trapped in a vehicle in Stockton or safe for Westside, you know, we're cutting down on time of getting that patient out to get help, you know. By the time our ambulance is usually there, sometimes before our rescue truck can get there. I mean, you know, then that cuts down time, because we can't help that person, and we can't get them out, we can't start Jaws of Life, we can't start the process of getting that, that vehicle ready, you know. As far as that goes also, as well as, like he's saying, chest pain patients or heart attack patients is the same way. We have, we do have AED, but other than that, we have no, no kind of equipment or anything in Stockton out there to help if we need to do. We have a chainsaw on our trucks, we have our hands, that's, or an axe, that's about it.
Mr. Tim?
Yes.
You got a comment for Mr. North and Greg concerning the lack of radio transmissions and whatever for Westside and Stockton? This is my suggestion. I suggest you guys get your fire chiefs at both locations, write down specifics, put it on a letter, send it to Gary, and also send a copy to the board of commissioners, what kind of action you want and the major issues, because something needs to be done, can't keep talking about it.
Uh, Commissioner?
Yes.
If I can say something?
Yes.
This is the fourth time in the past year and a half that we have brought this to y'all. Mr. Yelman's has been out three times. And when he comes out with one of his vehicles to do a radio check, Mr. Yelman's has a booth in his truck. So it's, it's not on me saying that he uses a more hard vehicle.
I agree with you there, Greg. I know Gary has all the information available in his, his truck, but however, I'm saying, put it in writing, send it to the board. Of course, I won't be here in January, but the board will need to take some action with Gary if he's not doing his job. That needs to be fixed.
So we can write a letter into y'all. We don't actually have to go through Gary.
It should be sent to Gary.
Well, I'm sure it went to Gary as well, but...
But definitely, personally copy the board of commissioners. Is that right, Attorney Superintendent?
Because we've had issues with the types of things, once to Gary and it never go.
Well, once the commissioners get it, we're gonna ask Gary about it. Where's your letter? Where did you go with this issue?
I, I was sitting here saying he's told y'all that.
I've mentioned that to y'all several times. Well, I've mentioned it before, to send us something in writing, whether it be dressed with board commissioners or, or me, where I can do something to the board. But people calling, the phone call is not, phone call is not, is, won't get it, will it?
Once we get it and physicalized and it's signed and it's dated by the fire chiefs, to the fire chief Gary Yelman's for the district, to the board of commissioners, it's official. It must be taken.
I told Greg, since he's, he's acting on Tim's behalf, just put that on his, since Tim's, um...
Right.
You still have to call the chain, you have to go to the fire chief, and then that comes to us, you got to call your chain.
And then going back to the, is it SOP?
It's the right.
I mean, again, that's coming from the chief, that the volunteer farmer disagree with that. I mean, we need, y'all need to help us.
We don't have no meetings. We have no say so in these outbound stations, that's what goes on. Okay, we have no meetings.
And then we come back, and it falls on us.
Gary don't want no input.
But it comes back to y'all being volunteer, I mean, that, that, I mean...
Yeah, I volunteer my life every day for safety of my life, and I put myself out there for someone else's safety.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, I guess we need to try to, maybe we need to have some reorganization meeting if y'all not happy with the fire department working.
Well, I have...
I'm not sure. I mean, I hope so, then.
They should have brought this up when the fire chief was sitting here.
Well, he got mad and left.
He got mad, well.
He, he got mad and left. I was hoping he was gonna be here because...
They should have been put on the agenda, not put citizens comments.
So when you send the letter up to your agenda, I'll be at the next meeting with you guys on the other side of the table.
I, I do have one other thing to, this is why I was hoping Gary would be here. Going back to our apparatuses being inspected and such, in the NFPA guidelines, the code 1911, in section 4.5.5, a completed inspection of documented checks of fire apparatuses shall be conducted at least as frequently as recommended by apparatus manufacturers, or once per year, whichever comes first, and that is through the actual fire department, the, the national fire thing. You can go look on the NFPA website, on their code listings, and it's all right there in the 1911 code. It, it goes along, and there's a whole list of, I can say it if I read off, but it'll take too long. It goes in parts like defines the system of apparatuses shall be checked, including all the pumpers, the water lines, and technicians, drive belts, brake systems, and it just goes on and on about that, but, just so he, he left, but...
Hopefully that'll be resolved Wednesday.
Is there any connection around, if the county's on different counties connection, if they're a little closer? Is it like Bayla is closer to Stockton than any?
Meet your aid agreement?
Well, we talked, we looked into that.
A verbal, I would make the verbal neighbor or something like that, payday, if they build it, and we still got one of them, they pay me to call it.
Well, neighbor be closest of any.
Especially with three, well, with a station right across the line.
Right, right, during there.
We, we used to do that. We wasn't laboring the firemen a lot, he would do it, and they would call us from there, and we'd go there.
I know Gary said it was a state mandate that the vehicles, the apparatuses be checked once a year, but that is a state, well, not necessarily a state, that is a national guideline, you know.
And again, hopefully that's gonna happen Wednesday.
So, I mean, if anyone speaks to him, I, I, you know, maybe coming from y'all, he would, he would look that up, if you know what I'm saying.
I'm sorry, you said the, the equal check is the national one?
The apparatus check, it's on the NFPA, which, uh, be a my apparatus.
Six months, or three months, six months, or something like that. We ain't got proof this man.
Right. I was hoping he would be here, because I did have, I, I, I didn't like the way he answered his question on that earlier.
Six months and do the other, the other six months.
Anybody else?
Let me see, I have one last comment.
Yeah, I said, I was hoping he would be here, because I didn't like the way he answered that earlier, you know, talking about how he put that in place after what happened to my late husband getting killed in the fire, firing the roll. You know, if we do go back and inspect these vehicles like that, you know, it was, showed that our brake system on that truck seemed to work after they did some things to it, after they went and inspected it. You know, there again, if that is pushed and mandated that we inspect these vehicles, we would have known then that something was going on with the, the brake pump thing to the truck, and, you know, that would have been, uh, what happened, you know. But the way he said that earlier was like, that's a reason it could have been played, but I still think it still needs to be pushed. I don't think it needs to go over a year, because even though our vehicles do sit there, and he's right, we don't drive them 3,000 miles. Or we don't drive them, you know, certain things, but they sit there, the longer they sit there, and y'all know, y'all been on our old vehicles, you have to drive them, and we did drive them. But if they're not checked and properly went over, and that's something that we couldn't do in our station, that was always, that goes to the county chief, that goes through them, that goes through DOT, or forestry checks those trucks, and we weren't allowed to, to do that. Only thing we could do is lots, washer fluid, that kind of stuff, make sure oil's in it, but, you know, that's, that had brake fluid, it just, the pump thing wasn't working properly. That's...
Thank you for your comments.
All right, glad you did, Jerry.
One last thing, there's a news article about a call meeting this month to set the military.
Yeah, Thursday, yeah.
What's the date?
Thursday.
It's Thursday.
At 5:30. And also, we need to put the, add the budget amendment to that agenda. So we, we don't have a call meeting, it's posted, I guess we have it, but...
Uh, it'll be Thursday, is Gregory room?
Yeah.
We're in the Gregory room, is that right?
It is Thursday, it's Thursday. But I'm not sure if they're having court, because I have a court this week. I have no idea. Just go and advertise it for here, and then we're safe.
You want to advertise it for here? It's in the paper, but it's in the green. No, it's in the paper, Rebecca advertised. And then we have to move it back.
It might need, so about people keep that door, just because...
Oh, we are planning, we need to, also, we plan to have a call meeting, a, a, a work session, well, it would be a meeting to have executives, wouldn't it? It'll be a call meeting to look at personnel matters regarding the county manager. Applications, so that would be January the 3rd at 5:00. That, that's what we said, right? We agree. That's the 3rd as well?
That's the Wednesday.
That's the Wednesday.
Fourth, or four, whatever, what day y'all want to do, Wednesday or 3rd? Do, let's do it Thursday, 3rd.
It'll be the 4th.
The 4th.
At what time?
5:30.
It's gotta be a call meeting, and it's just executive session. This gotta be a call meeting, and it's just executive session. Do we want to put on, put on there and advertise it, anything else or not?
That's all we could do is just.
We don't have anything else to talk about, isn't it? We won't be hiring anyone, at that time, we're just looking at applications. Anybody got anything else for?
I'm good.
Nice to do, Jerry.
Will we?